Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting in order. And before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that these meetings are recorded and the recording can be found on the township website several day, a few days after the meeting. Also, I want to announce an executive session that occurred on April 30th to discuss a personnel issue in the police department. With that, we'll go to the meeting agenda. And the first item is the approval of the meeting minutes from April, the April 12th, 2021, Board of Supervisors meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of April 12th, 2021.
Second it.
Okay, any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, mission passes. We'll move to the reports. Start with the police report, chief.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of April, 2021, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,068 entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued 171 traffic citations. They investigated 24 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 16 individuals. Additionally, for the month of April, the department members conducted three motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in 1,003 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, four of which were found to be overweight. Six inspections were also performed and numerous violations were reported. During the reporting period, the traffic officers conducted three additional inspections during their normal workdays, resulting in numerous violations to include one driver being placed out of service. And these inspections were the result of either motor vehicle stop from Route 100 or observing those trucks on some of our restricted roadways in the township and then being inspected and weighed thereafter. Year-to-date, the officers have answered 3,999 calls for service. They've arrested 59 individuals. They've written 582 traffic citations, 61 written warnings. They've investigated 84 crashes and they have weighed a total of 1,716 commercial motor vehicles. And additionally, for the month of April, I can report that we did not have any Narcan administrations within the police department.
Thank you. I'll move to the treasurer's report.
Good evening. In the general fund through the month of April, we have collected just over 33% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just over 31% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. Public works.
Thank you. For the month of April, the daily average flow to the Downingtown Treatment Plant was approximately 1.7 million gallons per day. There were no new sewer connections to the Darrick Treatment Facility and we had one new connection to the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant. For the month, the township received 2.3 inches of rain. So far, the normal for for year-to-date for the month of April is 13.5. The township currently is a 12.9, which is actually the first time, I think, ever I'm not, we are under rainfall for where we are right now. So the department responded to 183 PA1 calls. And like I mentioned with that rainfall, we did go out and clear catch basins before heavy rain events. The department was also out replacing sections of stormwater pipe on Norwood Road, Williamsburg, Tremont, as well as they did mill in Blacktop that once the pipe replacements were complete. We were out replacing street signs on Eagleview, Berkeley and Woodland. And then finally, we performed preventative maintenance in accordance with the sewer system program, as well as completed state inspections on trucks and trailers, as well as other regular vehicle maintenance.
Thank you. The fire marshal report.
Okay. Good evening. For the month of April, the department issued 123 permits for construction activities. A total of 83 inspections were conducted, 33 use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the fire marshal responded to 21 incidents during working hours, addressed one burning complaint and conducted one fire inspection.
Thank you. And the report for the Lineville Fire Company?
Yep. For the month of April, the Lineville Fire Company responded to 50 incidents, 29 were in Euclid Township, five in Upper Euclid Township, three in West Pikeville Township and 13 in other municipalities.
Thank you. And is there someone from the youth and ambulance? Okay. And can I get a motion to accept the reports?
So moved.
Maybe you're on mute.
Sorry, my dog was barking. I second that.
Is there any comments?
I'd just like to note Lee's beard. It's the first time I saw you with one.
All right, no other comments? All in favor? All right, mission passes. We'll move to the grants announcements. Scott?
Great. So after several meetings of reporting back to the board that we had not been selected for grants, I am very happy to report back that the township did receive two grants. The first in the amount of $350,000 through the multimodal transportation fund through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This will be used for the Peck Road Colbert replacement. We also received $175,000 from the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program for the Lineville Senior Park at the Lineville Park. So we are working towards getting those contracts executed and we'll be working with E.B. Walsh to kind of finalize both plans moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Nice work.
Yeah. All right, we'll move to the Stormwater Basin retrofit project update. Dan Daly, I believe you're giving a presentation?
Yes.
Description.
Scott Greenly, are you able to put any of those exhibits on? Maybe start with the Euclid Woods exhibit?
Give me one second, Dan. I'll pull that up.
So while he's pulling that up here, I'm going to be talking about three projects here today. If the township had received some grant money from the EP for to do some stormwater management improvements. These, the purpose of these, these grants were to improve water quality and and to help, help with the watersheds and as many areas within Chester County, we have impaired waterways and the EP has given us a grant award to do base, three basin retrofits. The first basin which shows up on your screen there right now is the Euclid Woods, which is part of the Williamsburg subdivision located on the western end of the township. That road, the cul-de-sac right there is Palace Drive. So this is just northwest of the ball field within the Williamsburg subdivision. And there's a Williamsburg park there with a clubhouse. And so this basin right now is a 96 acre drainage area going to this, to this basin. It was built in approximately 1994. And it discharges into a unnamed tributary to the east branch of the Brandywine Creek. This, this facility here is, is located partially on township-owned land and partially within the HOA lands. The facility is a responsibility of the homeowners association to own and maintain. The township is partnering with the homeowners association to, to make some improvements to this, to help with the water quality, as I mentioned earlier. Back in August of 2020, unfortunately, this basin had a, during the large storm events in August, actually had a blowout. The actual basin berm outlet pipe blew out due to the large storm event and some corroded pipe, outlet pipe. The HOA has made repairs to that facility and a very costly, costly repair to come through and retrofit that facility and bring that back to the predeveloped conditions before the before the blowout. And our project here right now is to come in and do a retrofit to help to naturalize that basin, to provide some water quality measures. So what may be the best to jump to the next sheet here, Scott? So that basin here, what, what our intention is to do with this basin is to, to come through here and you have an inflow pipe coming in from the Palace Drive cul-de-sac area, made outlets at an area, riprap area, and then there's an outlet pipe draining out of that basin. Basically down to the, down to the creek area. And right now, that 96 acres, that's the main source of the inflow of the stormwater and then we have the outflow going through the pipe. So if with the 96 acres of up slope area and any pollutants that come there from cars parked, from people doing lawn fertilizations and everything else that comes within 96 drainage acre drainage area, you have that first flush of stormwater that comes through with pollutants. And it can, it's, it short circuits and comes directly out, out in, in one pipe and out the next pipe. So what we're proposing to do here right now is to, to build up a, a small berm through that, separating the inflow and the outflow. And this will basically allow the water to, to have a longer flow path within the basin. So as it comes in, it will basically flow around as Scott is indicating there with the mouse and, and drain out of this facility. So that's going to help, help go ahead and have the plumes drop out. We're then going to turn around and naturalize the basin bottom here. So we've worked in with an environmental consultant who has got a lot of experience with this type of work and and we're going to basically come through and plant the bottom of this facility with a native wetland mixtures, plant mixtures in here to, to basically see this area to become a naturalized facility. That was naturalized plant material as it grows will, will act as a filtration mechanism here for, for any pollutants coming in and filter that out before it can discharge and drain into the, into the creek area. We're going to make some minor modifications to the outlet structure where the water discharges out to hopefully gain some of that additional water to help reduce the peak rate of discharge that comes out of that facility also. When basin blew out, we also, HOA had to do a large amount of work to reestablish that basin berm. They did a really good job with that, that work and get that all, all done, but it required them to clear a decent amount of tree areas in order to properly rebuild this basin. The Brandywine Conservancy actually has a conservation easement over this land back here. And working with them on this, they were looking to do some plantings on the downstream side of this basin berm. Also too, with all native, all native species, 100% native is what we're going to be planting back in there to, to reestablish some of that forest area that was denuded here for the, the construction of that emergency work done by the homeowners association. The wetland mixture inside here is also going to be all native. Also, I know that's a big push of the townships and we've heard that loud and clear and we've worked with our environmental consultants to make sure we have proper seed mixture. Within that, that is going to be a native, native, native plant material. So that's the big picture of it. We're just about finalized our design. I got the planting plan from the, our consultant here just the end of last week. And I'm looking to put the finishing touches on this and go out to forbidding construction.
You're gaining access to the site via Palace Drive?
We are. We are basically come down where there's a stormwater easement between these two homes. I've actually, we've actually designed this right now so that we don't have to bring any, any large amounts of material in or out. We actually have the berm, the berm that runs through the middle of this area here that's going to increase our flow path. We do need some solid material in here to build. I've actually, the red area located below the basin here is going to be my borrow area. We have a lot of excess, excess fill that was placed back in here that I'm going to use that material to build this berm area to avoid and having to drive large equipment or heavy truck equipment hauling material in and out of the site through here. So we're going to have to get some smaller equipment in here to do the grading work in here. And, and then we're going to haul the material basically from, from the backside of the berm into the basin to build that and trying to minimize that disturbance between, between the two houses. It was pretty well denuded worth the construction that the HOA did, but we definitely want to minimize. It's a tough, tough slope to traverse.
And those residents, those two residents there have put up with a lot this past two years.
They have. I gave them an update here today and looking to go ahead and probably meet with them early next week to go over our final plan for, for, for this work here to make sure they're on the same page. The, with this, with our grant application here, we're gonna, it is the HOA's responsibility to maintain this basin, but it's because the township is the grantee for this. We have to see this through and make sure it's, gets stabilized and we're going to have some, some maintenance responsibilities over next year or two, which is going to be making sure everything gets properly stabilized and all the plants grow. And then maybe a mowing or two within that basin and then we're going to turn that back over to the HOA to maintain once it's up and running. It's not going to be a lot of maintenance for them. It's going to be a mowing once or twice a year within that, but it's going to, they, they haven't been maintaining it to begin with, to, to, to be, to begin with. And that's what caused some of the problems here, but now we're, they got a good board in there right now and they're aware of what they're supposed to be doing and we'll, we'll, we'll work with them to make sure they get taken care of properly.
All three of these basins that you're going to be talking about, these next two as well. This is the money from the fines against Sunoco?
Correct.
So is DEP going to be coming out and doing inspections periodically as well?
Um, I had some discussions with DEP about this. They don't necessarily have the staff to end up doing, doing that. I mean, we do have some grant paperwork to process for them. They do rely on the township to make sure that we're implementing the project in accordance with our grant application. They may do a final closeout inspection for this, but they are going to rely on us to, to, to document that we've completed this work and give the project completion reports to them. So I don't anticipate a significant amount of inspection work from them. But, but they are going to be aware of what's going on when the project goes to construction and so on.
Well, I see we're going to be cutting and borrowing. You're certainly not going to have a spreader berm anymore. Is that correct?
Yes. So the outlet structure prior to the, the August rain event here and the downstream side was a level spreader, which is basically an outlet pipe that came into a another pipe that was kind of slowly dissipated that water. The HOA has made this repair and actually put an end wall in instead of a level spreader. We don't have any work to do on that, on that outlet. It's been replaced. It's all back together. HOA did a great job on getting that all done, but we will not have a level spreader discharge at the, at the end of this. It really wasn't, doesn't warrant a level spreader because it drains through a, a defined channel down to where the creek, creek is. So that's all, all done and stabilized and, and put back in place here.
And what, what kind of timeline, like how long will this project take from start to finish? Do you anticipate?
I haven't put together a construction schedule here for, for this here. But it's, it's, I mean, my, my gut reaction is, is you get the right contractor in here to do this work. It's not a, it's, it's, it's a tight area to be working in. So it's, you can't have a large crew come out here, but I would envision here, it could probably be done in, in three to four weeks worth of time from start to finish for, for construction. If they, if they do things right, it's not a, it's not a significant amount of work. It's, it's basically, you're building a, you're basically stripping out the bottom of the basin. The native material that's in there right now, you're basically building, you're shaping the bottom of it. You're building the, the berm through here. With the, the environmental consultant is actually recommending, there's a lot of wetland seed mixtures already built into that at that material within the basin bottom. We're going to actually spread that back over the bottom of the basin. And then, then we're going to plant that with seed mixture and blanket down. And that's, that's the, that's the gist of it. So it can, it could definitely be done in a, in a month's time for start to finish.
It's a great project. I'm sure that the, the residents that are down along the creek that especially in East Cowal that had complained over the years are going to be very happy to see this one come accomplished.
Yeah. So I mean, ultimately here, really the water comes in, it's not being, it's not being treated at all. This was all designed and built free our current stormwater management regulations. There's no real water quality improvements that, that, that happened with this basin. This basin was built as a, as a rate control feature. So this is basically bringing up this basin up to speed here to really help out the, the, the pollutants downstream and, and being done up to today's standards.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, you want to jump to the next one here? Is that how you want to be run through them? I don't know if you, obviously you supervise your rest on a couple of questions here. Do you you want to, how do you want to handle this here, Bill?
Why don't you move through the next two and then if there's any questions from the public, we'll just do that after you do all the
one is Acker Park. So I have some plans, preliminary plans for that one. So while Scott's pulling that up, the Acker Park basin here is a, is a Acker Park. For those who don't know, it's a small little pocket park inside of the Marchwood community off of Bowman Circle is the, is the main entrance there. I guess you can get in from, that's, that's the main parking lot area, but it's basically between Concord and Devon. The, this facility here was built somewhere in the 1970s as part of the Marchwood West development here. This basin basically collects about, it's not small of a drainage area. It's about 11 and a half acres of drainage area. That's coming in from, there's a pipe coming in from Noel Circle and the up slope areas from the rivers, also the houses from Devon Drive and the, the area for the, the park, including the parking lot. This water basically discharges from, 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 from this basin into storm sewer system onto Concord Avenue and then drains down into an unnamed tributary Valley Creek, also known as Lineville Run. The, this basin here, we were hoping actually to be able to actually, the same base, same way we're hoping to do last for the other basin is to, to have a groundwater infiltration to help reduce the volume of water leaving the site. Our crews did go out to do some soil testing to see what type of soil material in there. It wasn't very conducive to allow for water infiltration. We were looking to put a stone pit in the bottom of this basin. The ground, the soils were well conducive for that, for that. So we're going to be doing a similar type process here that we did with the the Williamsburg Palace Drive basin. Except for this basin, we have a little better access to it. It's a little easier to get in and out of and, and it's, it's more of a mowed, maintained lawn area right now with some pretty well compacted soils in the bottom of that basin. So our intention right now is to come in through and excavate out the, the basin bottom for probably about eight to 12 inches of, of material and, and put some amended soil material in there. So some potentially some mushroom compost mixed in with some other soil, soil mixtures in there. We haven't quite finalized the design for that soil, soil mixture yet. We're going to do that within the basin bottom. We're going to then go ahead and plant this with a wetland seed mixture also. This wetland seed mixture, because of the being in a park in a highly visible area, we're actually going to use a wildflower wetland mixture to go into the basin bottom here, which would be, I think, a little more attractive than just a green, green planted wetland basin bottom. This one's real visible. The Euclid Woods basin here is kind of tucked back behind houses and, and it's not real easy to see within to the, in that basin. So we weren't using the wildflower mixture for that basin here. We were using one that was a little better suited for that, for, for that setting there now. We are also going to look to plant a couple of trees around the perimeter of this that can, that can provide some shade within the basin area. Because right now it, it does, does get a lot of, a lot of full sun, sun, sun and the, the shade is going to, to help with the reduced water, water temperatures within the, within this area also. And we are going to also build, there's two kind of circular areas shown as four bay two and four bay one. The two that Scott just circled there on the plan. Those are going to be in areas for pollutants. The, the one, four bay number one on the right side there is a, there's a 20 inch pipe coming in there from Noel Circle. And we're going to go ahead and have a four bay there to, to kind of collect the pollutants that drain into that facility before it goes into the, into the wetland area, into the wetland bottom mixture. And that'd be an area that they can be cleaned out as needed here by the, by the township staff and township bones that maintains this and will be the one responsible for, for, for that. And yeah, so that's the general mix, general plan for this one here, having a couple of four bays to help to capture that water. The kind of pollutants coming into it prior to discharge into the main basin. And then we're going to plant the bottoms with a wetland mixture and, and let that kind of go, become kind of a natural wetland area. And that will be mowed once or twice a year is what our, what our plan was.
Um, Dan, the, the concrete inlet that's in the basin is really high off the ground. I mean, I'm assuming water doesn't flow out of that basin until it's really deep or are you going to change it?
Yeah. So we actually have modeled that, that structure here. So there is a five inch orifice located here at 562.68. So it actually does. And then there's a three inch orifice there and I have to relook at our, our routing calculations, but we were looking at modeling, changing the modeling of that outlet structure in order to help, help minimize the peak flow that leaves from this basin. So we were going to try to right-size this facility here, that outlet structure. That outlet structure is what controls what is discharged. And the more we can restrict it and let that slowly release, the better it is for the downstream, downstream. So we're going to go through and, and tweak that outlet structure design to, to optimize the, how much water that can hold during the larger storm events in order to get the most benefit for the downstream water, watershed.
Okay.
I don't know the specifics of it, but we have modeled it. I just don't have that in front of me, what that, the modeling of that is.
That's okay. It sounds great. I love the wildflowers idea. It is very visible and people walk around the basin.
Yep. I just thought, we thought it would be a really good, 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 good setting for this one because you can see into this facility here and it's going to just make this a more, and we also going to incorporate some, some educational signs. So what, what we want to end up doing here, we have to go ahead and finalize the, the concept for that, but we're going to basically have some signs basically put up there to, to help educate the public on, on what we've done for this basin. We're not going to do that over at the Palace Drive basin. It's not an area where they're looking to invite the public back into and walk around that basin. So we weren't necessarily, there are people that do kind of stroll back into the woods there, but it's not an area that they're looking to, to promote as the, the public to, to walk back into. So that didn't really quite, quite fit within that facility, but this one here is definitely a, an opportunity to help do public education outreach by putting some educational signs.
That's great. So, oh, I'm sorry, Dan. When was this going to get started?
Um, we still have a little bit of work to do for this one. I mean, it's still going to happen here. We're probably, now that we got our planting plan here from our consultant here. I'm hoping within, within a month or so to put this out for a bid here and this is, this might be a little bit longer because we have some imported material and hauling out some hauling out the material that's, that we're digging out from the basin bottom. I got to exactly figure out where I'm going to do with that material, if I'm going to spread it out somewhere, if I'm going to, going to go ahead and dispose a bit offsite somewhere. So that's a, that's a still a design consideration that I need to figure out. But I'm probably, I'm hoping that the Palace Drive basin, I'm out to bid here potentially as early as next week. This one here, I have another couple of weeks worth of work to kind of finalize and, and kind of get, get all, get all worked out. So but this one's going to, I, within, within a month, I would think I would be ready to go and be able to send this out for a public bidding advertisement.
And you said you were going to cut this once or twice, the bottom only?
Correct. So what our intention would be with these facilities is we're going to, right now it gets mowed on a regular basis. We're going to basically have this thing grow up and it's going to probably require maybe, maybe two mowings a year.
Okay.
I have to work that out here with my, my, my consultant on that because the, the, the green wetland mixture, you obviously can mow and it just stays green. I don't want to turn around and I got to You obviously can mow um, and it just stays green. I don't wanna turn around and I gotta figure out the wetland mixture or the, the wildflower mixture here. Last thing I wanna do is mow out the pretty wildflowers and they don't necessarily bloom right, bloom right away again. So, right, that's to, to be determined.
Okay. Right, great.
So um, the next facility here um, is uh, gonna be the Sherry Boulevard Jug Handle. Um, we actually um, aren't too far on this one here because we were waiting for um, the adjoining development there on the uh, I guess Happy Days Farm site, um, to kind of get a little further along with their plans. Um, so this one right here, just to orient everybody here, um, uh, on the left side of the plan there is Sherry, Sherry Boulevard. And the top, top uh, right-hand side is Route one hundred. Um, so this is the jug handle as if you're coming south on one hundred. And want to uh, to, 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 to come onto Sherry Boulevard, um, to uh, to, to go, to go, I guess northeast onto, onto, onto Sherry. Um, so uh, the um, so we've done our survey work on here. We've done some preliminary calculations with um, uh, determining how much drainage area is getting to this facility and the outlet structure. We went out and actually did some soil testing in this one. Also to see if we get some groundwater infiltration. It is directly adjacent to a wetland area and it's a pretty wet. Um, wet uh, bottom uh, area that stays pretty moist uh, all year round. I wasn't anticipating good results, but we had to test anyway. Um, and we didn't get good soil conditions in there to allow for uh, groundwater infiltration. With the wetlands directly next door, next to it on the south side. Um, so we've done some preliminary analysis for it here and then uh, the Happy Days Farm folks came in and uh, and are, are looking to make some modifications to the jug handle. Um, Friday of last week, I had a conference call with Traffic Planning and Design. So our next, I think I give you another sheet here, Scott, that shows what traffic planning and designs our plans are for the um, uh, for this drug handle and their modifications that are currently under review here by PennDOT and the township for the developments. Um, and uh, and it's still a, a work in progress here right now. Um, but they are basically proposing to make some modifications for the jug handle um, in order to accommodate the traffic associated with the uh, the development plans. Um, so uh, the um, the area uh, within that jug handle is um, they're looking to instead of uh, they're, they're widening that circle and bringing that out to tee off, uh, have more of a, a straight tee with Sherry Boulevard rather than um, a tighter, tighter radius coming through there. My understanding is that is to uh, the reason they're doing that is to uh, to increase the queue uh, length for um, for the number of vehicles making that, making those turns and gonna be within the jug handle area. Um, they also have some widening of Sherry Boulevard, um, as you approach Route one hundreds, um, that they are doing in, in, in that area. So uh, we wanted to make sure that uh, whatever our plans were within this facility wasn't going to be um, uh, we would do something and then find out that they need to wipe the whole thing out with their work. Um, so at this point, it looks like we have our good center area of our um, uh, of our stormwater basin within that junk handle that we can do our work in and stay out of what their plans are. They obviously have a little bit of road ahead of them with um, guy going through the approvals with um, uh, with the township and, and, and PennDOT for the highway improvements uh, that they need to, they need to get done here for this project here. Um, but it looks as if we can probably um, uh, design this to incorporate what we wanna do with this basin. Um, to improve water quality and uh, not be negatively impacted for the work that they're gonna end up doing. Um, so uh, so at this point here, this one's just a brief update of saying this is where we're at with it. Um, I need to uh, um, I need to kind of now start putting my pen to paper and, and uh, start looking at how we're gonna incorporate a design into this facility. That is going to uh, to accommodate um, uh, what we want to accomplish and not, not be impacted by their work. In general, we're gonna probably be doing a similar type, type feature in here. This is a uh, a mode uh, uh, grass mode area here. We're gonna look to naturalize this basin bottom. Um, we have the drainage coming into this facility is coming from the adjoining residents in uh, parking lot area and portions of the uh, of the Sherry Boulevard and Route one hundred. Um, all kind of discharge some water within this facility. And uh, we're gonna look to naturalize this facility uh, with some planting mixtures. In order to help improve water quality. Um, that's the, that's the, the concept of what we pitched when we did the grant application. And uh, what we want to uh, what we want to do for this, this discharges right into um, the headwaters of the Shimonah Creek, uh, Shimonah Creek Watershed directly uh, directly across the street. Um, and uh, so it is a um, a good, good spot to do uh, to do this um, a project like this. Cause it's, it's addressing uh, decent amount of impervious coverage that are, that is getting to uh, getting this facility and it's the headwaters of a, of a, of a high-quality stream designation, so.
So the increased drainage that will be required as a result of the widening of Sherry Boulevard and also the jug handle movement. All that drainage is gonna go into this basin?
Um, it, it, that's uh, to be determined. Um, so the, the, the widening of um, of uh, so the, I spoke on Friday with a traffic engineer who is basically in charge of doing the traffic improvements. Um, uh, they haven't, um, he was in uh, the storm, their stormwater engineer. Um, the, 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 the relocation of the jug handle actually right now appears that if it's gonna drain down towards Sherry Boulevard and may not discharge back into this basin. Uh, but the widening area of Sherry Boulevard as you approach Route one hundred. Uh, they do have an inlet, uh, I fifty-three right up there that is um, is showing a discharge into this basin. Um, I don't, I'm not sizing and designing this basin um, to accommodate um, their waters, their responsibility to manage that. But that's one of the coordination work that I, I still need to, to, to do with the applicant and see what their attention was to uh, to go ahead and uh, manage that stormwater because of course the township has stormwater management ordinances.
Well, as you're, as I know you're aware, as I know you're aware that this is one of the basins that we maintain.
Correct.
I would think that if they're gonna make any kind of additional demands in regards to the utilization of it, that they should also be partly responsible, if not fully responsible for the future maintenance then.
Okay. Good, good point. We can uh, definitely have that discussion with them. The traffic engineer was very helpful in discussions about what their, what their plans were for the roadway improvements and how their intention was to not modify and impact this uh, this stormwater facility. Um, but they do, would definitely are contributing an increase in previous coverage to it. And uh, and uh, the applicant has been uh, pretty uh, my past discussions with them. Um, that they're, they, they're, they're cooperative to, to do what they need to do to, to uh, to address their, their, their work and their improvement. So I'm happy to uh, to continue that discussion with uh, with, with them and uh, and, and go forward from there.
You think you'll actually do something on this, this year?
Um, I, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent positive. Um, uh, we will, we very well may force to. I gotta have a discussion with DEP about it. Um, and uh, find out from them, our grant application is due to uh, is due to expire at the end of uh, end of this year. So uh, if DEP is able to give us an extension as we work through some of these details, then we may push this off. Um, if DEP comes back and says they're not ability, don't have the ability to give an extension to this work. Um, then we might jump ahead and, and say, let's get this done here now. And, and then when uh, when the developer comes in and does his work, he'll have to just work around our, our, our improvements.
It sounds good to me.
Thank you, Dan.
So that's the, that's the recap, that's the recap of the three facilities here. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions and uh, and go from there.
Maybe, Doug, do you have any other questions before we go to the public?
No, um, I, I'm expecting Dan's gonna talk a little bit more in general about stormwater here eventually. Sure. Like to hear the other questions.
Great. Is there any comments, any questions or comments from uh, the public?
I just wanted to uh, reiterate, I'm John Nielsen from Auto Mine Land Development. We are more than happy to cooperate and work with the township, the township engineer to uh, come up with the best plan. Uh, and to can help their grant application and also do all the things necessary to, you know, do all the environmentally conscious things to help the water as it discharges to the Shimonah. So, we're here to cooperate and uh, be a good steward and partner to uh, your efforts.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other comments? Okay, if not, Dan, you, I think you were gonna give a little more high-level discussion of our stormwater situation as, as, as it exists.
So, so as discussed with the uh, with the township staff here, um, we have, um, I was back to see you earlier. I forget when, I guess the last, I forget when we, when I came back to tell you about our MS four program, our uh, municipal separate storm sewer system program and our pollution reduction plan. So um, the township has asked our office to uh, to start um, looking into um, we have a lot of projects that we need to incorporate coming into the, into the upcoming years. Our pollution reduction plan. Um, uh, uh, that has been approved by DEP requires five years to implement uh, ten percent reduction in sediment load from various watersheds within, within the township. Um, um, we have lots of aging infrastructure. Um, and uh, we've been working with the township staff to evaluate those uh, the infrastructure. And there's a lot of um, costs coming, coming forward uh, with um, stormwater management improvements that the township is uh, is gonna need to undertake in the, in the near future. So we're in the process right now, as requested by the township to uh, to evaluate some of those costs and some of our, our planning, uh, budget, budget, uh, planning here for, for improvements and including um, uh, pipes, uh, old corriable pipes that are um, that need to be replaced within roadways, crossing culverts. Um, and uh, the, all the stuff's kind of um, building as uh, as this infrastructure ages. And uh, so we're in the process right now evaluating those costs and helping the township evaluate some funding sources for, for that work. We will continue obviously to look for grant, grant, uh, grant monies that are available um, to help uh, help fund that, fund those improvements. But we are also looking at the um, the, the rules and regulations associated with the Stormwater Authority. Um, and uh, and potential stormwater fees that come associated with that as a potential for uh, fun, funding sources. So um, we're in that process right now of uh, identifying our stormwater facilities and some costs associated with projects. And then uh, we'll look at um, figuring out ways to uh, to, to figure out some funding for that, which is um, one of them would be a potential stormwater authority.
I just know that there are several other communities in the area that are at one stage or another involved with doing exactly what you just spoke about. One of them is to our north upper Euclid, another one is west Goshen. Uh, both of them are pretty far along, having already surveyed their entire townships. And uh, are looking at what kind of quote-unquote assessment would be necessary uh, in order to handle all the requirements that are gonna be coming down. And all the things that we have to do. Uh, it's interesting to note that this Palace Drive Basin that you talked about earlier. Uh, tomorrow, some of our public works people are going into that pipe that comes down Palace Drive off of Tremont. It's a sixty-inch pipe put in the ground in nineteen ninety-four. On, it was supposed to be forty-plus years as far as its useful life is concerned. And we know that there are sections of it where the bottom of it is already out. It's a sixty-inch pipe. It's very deep, probably fifteen-plus feet. And the cost to get in there and actually replace what could be as much as two hundred and seventy-five feet or more. It's gonna be quite excessive to say the least. And that's just one little project. That's one little section. Uh, as you know, we have eighty miles of roadway in the township lane wet. Uh, and that, that, it just the costs could get to be uh, very, very high to say the least. Uh, so I think we need to go in with our eyes open and really start to consider the possibility that we're gonna have to have an authority, take a look at stormwater management, all aspects, not just retention basins, but pipe crossings. As well as uh, just simple runs of, of storm sewer, because it's gonna get to be very, very expensive. So that's my little spiel.
Yeah, Westchester Borough is another um, municipality within the county that has actually already implemented, uh, implemented this to help with their uh, aging infrastructure and funding, funding sources, so.
Thank you, Danny.
You're welcome.
You're on mute, Bill.
I was saying, doing all that talking. So I, well, thank you, Dan. Appreciate all the, all those uh, summaries of the projects and um, you know, things to come. So uh, if there's no other comments, um, we'll move on to the next agenda. I, I don't much, I believe the, um, I'm of the understanding that Downey Town East High School withdrew their request for a parade.
That is correct.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four. Scott, do you have a?
There we go, sorry.
Okay.
So, so basically what, what this ordinance is, is proposed is um, the way that we do postings of speed limits in the township is via ordinance. And what we would like to do is post the area of Woodland Drive uh, between Peck Road and Woodland Drive where it ends there at twenty-five miles an hour. Um, I, we've met with John Corullo, one of our traffic consultants and you know, Chief Alexander's been heavily involved. Um, uh, with, looking at this. Um, and I think where we, we ended with is it, it would be appropriate at this time, due to the residential uh, nature of that part of the, the township. Were this for Woodland Drive to be posted at twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay, both Scots, any anticipation of adverse reaction from residents who will have a sign in their yard?
Well, that certainly is always a possibility.
I have a sign in my, I have a speed limit inside of my front yard and actually birds nest on the top of it, so it provides some bird watching. It's really not that bad.
We have had in the past, in that specific area, very adverse reaction to the installation of signs. So if that's not gonna be a problem, I would move that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-one oh four.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor? All right, question passes. Uh, then we'll move to the Sanoco update. Um, first I'll give a summary of the activities in the Sanoco, Sanoco here. Drill areas and then I will do a summary of some of the uh, recent uh, issues that have been uh, surrounding the Hermano West Drive uh, drill site. So there's only two uh, active areas in the township right now uh, that haven't been remediated. Um, and I still have uh, Sanoco personnel or their contractors working for the ME two and ME two X programs, projects, I should say. Uh, one is uh, the HCD three-ten site, which is the Hermano West Drive, which goes uh, stretches from Hermano West Drive to Upper Euclid. Um, as of this morning, it was considered forty percent complete of, for the twenty-inch pipe pullback. Um, and based on their app, their progress so far scheduled to be completed this week. Uh, the sixteen-inch pipe had previously been completed. Uh, and while, we'll talk a little bit more about the, the uh, the, the drilling mud that is spilled from the site. Right now, the Sanoco implemented a temporary filter bag improvement within the inlet um, to filter runoff from the the site, which was the site of a former daycare. Um, and so that's the uh, status of the activities right now. Uh, HCD three-sixty, which is the drill that goes from Devon Drive to uh, Shone Road. Um, is still paused with Sanoco waiting on P A D E P for approval to start the uh, twenty-inch pipe work. The sixteen-inch pipe had previously been completed. Um, the, once that P A D E P approval comes in, uh, Sanoco expects to do casing work. Um, and then proceed with the installation of the pipe. They expect there to be about two weeks from the time they receive approvals until the time uh, that they're able to work um, due to remobilization work that needs to be done. Um, and then the Devon Drive site will be uh, restored once the work is complete. Um, so with that, there is, as I said, there was an issue with, with uh, inadvertent returns at the Hermano West site. So I would ask Dan, maybe you could give a summary of what you know based on your view of the site as well as your contacts with DEP.
For, um, so uh, back in um, uh, April eighteenth, um, which was a Sunday, uh, there were some um, uh, uh, concern um, received from some residents um, of the, of the township here that of the of the township here that related to some discharge of some discolored water directly below the the discharge, the drill site, HDD 310 drill site. DEP had had arrived on site here on on that Sunday and had taken some samples of the of the of the discharge outfall location that's located on the West Company property that discharged into a wetlands area down slope to a creek area tributary of Shimonah, Shimonah Creek there. The so DEP has been on site monitoring this. They actually following that initial concern expressed on the 18th. DEP and Sanoco had been monitoring this along with some of our some rural residents have done a great job of of taking a look at this. And they they actually came through and we we helped the Sanoco and everybody by pulling up our our mapping that we have of the area for storm sewers and trying to figure out where how everything is connected. There was a former daycare site that has been demolished in this area that has has some connections and tie-ins to this storm sewer system that drains out to the Hermano West cul-de-sac. DEP did sample this material and sent it out for laboratory analysis and they did find, I was told today, that the results of that testing, it was betonite material within the within the lab test for for this. They are classifying this as an inadvertent return. And but they did flush the system and took some additional samples during the flushing process and 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 have been monitoring this. We were out last Wednesday, which was May 5th with with DEP and Sanoco representatives because it was a rain event that was occurring and we were continuing seeing a discolored discharge coming from the the drill site area. There was samples taken of that material at that date, results of that to determine if it was betonite or not is are not back yet. And is being analyzed here through DEP. And and at this point here, they're not exactly sure there the discharge right now from our observations is subsurface. There is no overland flow of stormwater runoff coming from this site that is a is a smoking gun that's showing where this material is coming from. It appears to be coming from the underdrain systems that were located through the daycare, the former daycare site. That's basically discharging into an inlet that's located on that daycare property that then drains into the into the storm sewer system in Hermano West Drive. So what what they have, Sanoco has incorporated in into an outlet into the inlet located within the township right away is a filter bag contraption that was that was designed to to capture the runoff coming from this area to to filter that water before it gets discharged out into the creek creek area. And and it's being monitored here right now. Today was obviously a dry day. DEP is on site during the drilling operation, as Bill had mentioned earlier. They were 40% complete today, this morning, an update I got late this afternoon. They were approximately 60% complete with that pullback. And 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 so that 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 source of the of where this contaminant is 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 unknown at this time. And and that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Also, I want to give a quick shout out to the alert and concerned residents who, you know, contacted the DEP when they saw this, that it didn't look right, the water that was flowing into the creek. And they contacted the township so that we could all be aware of what was going on and address the issue. So if it weren't for residents with their eyes open, we may not have caught as much of the pollution that, you know, ultimately flowed into the tributary there. So I just want to thank the residents for paying attention, taking action.
Yes. So any questions about about that, about Sanoco and about that situation? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman Laura Obenski, I just had a quick comment. I wanted to thank the township for their vigilance and following up with Sanoco and the DEP to make sure this is documented. And I also just wanted to reiterate that I think it's really important that we make sure that the actual notice of violation is issued by the DEP because those are sometimes administrative closeouts that don't result in lasting documentation. And then as we have development come in the future, we don't have that information to look at. So just being vigilant about making sure that that's issued and then also the the subsequent lab results for the inadvertent returns that occurred after the 18th.
Yes, thank you. That's a great point. And we've also been working with Senator Muth and Representative Otten, who has been very vocal to the DEP about following up on this event as well as others. I think if patience wasn't completely worn out previously, it's it's worn out now and and they're hearing it from from various directions at this point. But thank you. If that if there's no other comments, I'll move to the announcements and then then we'll go to the open public comments. So the on May 11th, the Environmental Advisory Council Education Series webinar will be held at 7:00 PM. It'll be Nature's Best Hope. On May 13th, Historical Commission meets at 7:30 PM. On May 18th, the Euclid Township Office, it's just a note that Euclid Township's office closed at 12:00 PM for the primary election as as the township does for for every election day. On a May 19th, the zoning hearing board will meet at 7:00 PM. On May 19th, again, the Environmental Advisory Council meeting will be at 6:30 PM. On June 2nd, the Planning Commission will be held at 7:30 PM. And then, and this is rescheduled from our normal date, but the Board of Supervisors will meet on June 7th next month at 7:30 PM. At this time, everything is scheduled to be at Zoom, but I if you joined early, you may have heard our solicitor mention that the the format of the meeting is is kind of TBD depending on some some activity in the state, correct?
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, so just assume it's Zoom until you hear otherwise.
And all the links will be all posted on the website. They're all open to the public. I highly recommend the EAC education webinar about how to bring nature home with the tally for Nature's Best Hope tomorrow night.
Okay, with that is open it to public comment about any township issue.
Can I go ahead and piggyback and add one more announcement?
Sure.
I just wanted to announce since tonight's theme is kind of stormwater management, that next Friday on the 21st, there is a stormwater management workshop for for homeowners associations and property managers. And I believe that the township already has a staff member attending, but it would be really great to have some of our HOAs attend and other people that are interested in learning about the responsibilities and best management practices for stormwater. It is being held at, sorry, too many screens. Friday, May 21st, from 9:00 to 12:30 PM at the East Brandywine Community Park, which is 440 Dilworth Town Road. And it's available both virtually and in person. And if you're interested in more information, I believe the EAC is going to be putting it up on their Facebook site. So you can find the registration there. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a quick announcement as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I forgot to mention earlier that for four months now, police department administrators throughout the area who have students that attend the Downingtown School District have been participating in a program called Making Connections. And the administrators have been meeting via Zoom with students from the downtown East High School, West High School and the STEM campus who are members of the Black Student Union. And we have been having open conversations, getting to know each other with the plans of of moving forward and continuing to build our relationships with each other to do some community events together. And we're having a kickoff event that's going to be occurring on May 22nd. We're planning to do a a drive-through food drive to benefit Chester County residents who are in need. And we're doing that through the the Chester County Food Bank. We're also going to be supporting the Lord's Pantry in Downingtown. It's going to be at the Lineville Middle School on May 22nd from, I believe, the hours are going to be from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. We're still doing some of the planning for that. But if anybody has the ability to stop by that day to donate some non-perishable and canned goods, it would be great. It's an opportunity for us for the first time to meet with the students that we've been engaging with online. And so we're excited about it and we're going to continue to do things through the summer and and into the next school year as well and hopefully continue to build this program. But as of yet, it's been the administrators of our departments, we're going to be engaging our officers in this program as well. And to date, it's made up of members from the Euclid Township Police Department, the Upper Euclid Township Police Department, the East Brandywine Township Police Department, the Downingtown Borough Police Department and the West Brandywine Township Police Department. And so it's a great thing and we're really looking forward to it. So anybody that can come out that day, we really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. All right, any other comments? If not, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.